Well, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, March the 10th, 2022. Before we get started, if everybody could turn their cellphones either off or to silent, we would greatly appreciate it. If this is your first time joining us today, welcome to City Hall. We're happy to have you. Outside, there are little sheets of paper. They look like this. If you'd like to be heard today on any case that's before us on our agenda, you can grab one of those sheets of paper and fill them out, hand them to staff here, and they'll make sure I get them so we can call upon you at the appropriate time. When you do come up to the podium, please start out by giving us your name and address for the record, and then we'll give you five minutes to tell us what we need to know or what you think is pertinent to the case. Just so we're clear, we do reserve the right to cut off comments if they're superfluous or we've heard the issue before, you know, anything. So we do want to hear from you, and we're glad you're here. And so with that, we'll get started on our agenda. Our first order of business is to receive the minutes of the February 24th, 2022 meeting. And if there's no further discussion from commissioners, I'll take a motion to receive those minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive the minutes from the February 24th, 2022 meeting.
Okay, I have a motion. I'll take the second on Prime Gov. We'll buffer momentarily. Motion to receive the minutes was seconded by Commissioner Clare, so I have a motion to second. Please cast your votes when available. Let's do a voice vote. Sounds great. Commissioner Clare.
Yea.
Commissioner Powers.
Yea.
Commissioner Privet.
Yea.
Commissioner Hinckel.
Yea.
Commissioner Highsmith.
Yea.
Commissioner Pennington.
I too will vote aye.
All votes have been cast, and those minutes are received. Am I good to move on even though? Okay, let's do it. Next order of business are continuance requests from staff. We have a number of uncontested requests today, and then I guess we have won a new one, but what are the uncontested requests, Mr. Butler?
We have several. Item 13 is SPOD 1390 deferred to March 24th. Item 16, case C 7411 deferred to April 14th. Item 20, case PC 10795 deferred to March 24th. Item 21, SPOD 1377 deferred to March 24th. Item 22, case SPOD 1388 deferred to March 24th. Item 23, case C 7410 deferred to March 24th. Item 24, case PC 10798 deferred to April 14th. Item 25, case PC 10799 deferred to April 14th. Item 26, case C 7388 deferred to April 14th. Item 27, case CE 1065 deferred to July 28th. Item 28, case CE 1066 deferred to July 28th. And item 29, case PC 10765 has been withdrawn.
Okay, a lot of continuance requests there. Is there anybody here that wanted to be heard on any of the items on the screen in front of you? If not, and there's no discussion on any of those items from commissioners, I'll take a motion to accept the continuance or approve the contingencies as read.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve of the uncontested, uncontested continuance requests as read.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Pennington. It's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Looks like we're running now. Please cast your votes. One, two, three. All votes should be cast, and those contingencies are approved. We have one new continuance request, I believe, that I'm aware of. Mr. Butler, you want to read that one?
Yes, item 18, case SPOD 1217, request to defer to March 24th.
Is there anybody who wanted to be heard on that item today? SPOD 1217? Okay. If there's no discussion, I'll take a motion to continue that as read.
Mr. Chairman, I move we continue, we grant the new continuance request as read.
Okay, I have a motion. It's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast, and that continuance is approved as well. Next order of business, kind of a unique item on our agenda today, is relates to a resolution for Commissioner Mary Coffey, who served Ward III from 2017 through last meeting. So we're happy to have Commissioner Coffey today, and we have a resolution to present. Cindy, are you going to read that? I'll come down.
Whereas the city, Oklahoma City Planning Commission recognizes Mary Coffey for her valuable service and dedication to the planning commission, and whereas there's no greater commission than public service, as it is a dedication to others at personal sacrifice, and whereas Mary Coffey has faithfully serviced the citizens of this community as Ward III Planning Commissioner from May 16th, 2017 to February 24th, 2022, and whereas Mary Coffey steadfastly served her ward during challenging times, navigating new technology, meeting in person and virtually, and dedicating her time to keep business moving in Oklahoma City during a worldwide pandemic, and whereas Mary Coffey's expertise and knowledge of Ward III has been beneficial to the Planning Commission and residents of Oklahoma City in facilitating decisions that created a better community, and whereas Mary Coffey's commitment to good communication, collaboration, and community support has made numerous projects more successful, and whereas the fulfillment of Mary Coffey's responsibilities on the Planning Commission was achieved with a heartfelt dedication and earnest devotion to the well-being of the community and betterment of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Planning Commission of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Mary Coffey for her outstanding years of dedicated service to Ward III in the City of Oklahoma City, and we will share the very best.
Mary, I just want to tell you what an honor it has been to serve with you. I'm sure there's a few other commissioners that would like to say something, but I have so enjoyed my time on the commission with you. We came on about the same time. You have always been very engaged, very responsive, very thoughtful, and I just so appreciate. I know everybody at the city appreciates your service. It is a sometimes thankless role, but the good news is the retirement pension benefit is exactly what your pay was. So that's the best news I can give you.
That's good news.
That's great news. Yeah, don't count it all in one place. So at any rate, thank you very much, and I'll let you say a few words if you'd like to, and then I'll invite the other commissioners to do that. So thank you, Mary.
Well, thank you so much, Chairman Cravens. It has been a real privilege and an honor to serve the citizens of Oklahoma City, and I so much appreciate the Oklahoma City Planning Department, Mr. Butler certainly for your service and for the service of the whole planning department. I recently told the mayor what a fine department this is, how you work together so well as a team and individually. You're certainly credentialed, you're creative, you're cognizant of the needs of not only the members of the planning commission but of the citizens of Oklahoma City. A couple of gals are just priceless to me, Cindy and Sarah. My goodness, getting those packages out to the commissioners several days before the meetings, allowing us the opportunity to study the issues, to meet with the neighbors, neighborhoods, and work, work through a lot of the problems before they come to this body on Thursdays, helping us get through the meetings much sooner than we otherwise would. Certainly my thanks to Chairman Scott Cravens. He has a unique ability to listen to the public, to listen to the commissioners, to synthesize those concerns, get us through the meetings in four or five hours instead of seven or eight. I have a personal moniker for him. I've shared with him, and I'll joyfully share that for you. My name for him is Mr. Head 'em up and move 'em out and avoid those slippery slopes. So also my thanks to his predecessor as chairman when I came on, Commissioner Janice Powers. She led me through my early days as a commissioner, attended several evening meetings with me in my neighborhood to kind of show me the ropes and how to deal with those certain things. So I certainly appreciate your help too, Janice. And lastly, I thank the commissioners with whom I've served. We haven't always seen eye to eye, but you know, that is as it should be because none of us know what happens in our wards more than you do, work with your various citizens. So I wish each of you well as you continue to work with the citizens in your ward and other citizens in the city, moving forward with Plan OKC within the parameters and the guidelines that we work. And as Mr. Cravens said, we don't please all of the people all the time, but we do the best we can within the parameters that we work. So I've enjoyed working with you, and I so appreciate this resolution and these flowers. You warmed my heart. Thank you.
If anybody has any thoughts they'd like to share on Commissioner Coffey, I'll certainly welcome that at this time.
Oh, I have to just say, you know, working with Mary has just been so, you know, inspiring. She, I don't think I've worked with anybody during my time on the commission that cares more about the people of her ward and the city in general. She, you know, just jumped right in. She didn't need much help from me. She was very much ready, willing, and able to, you know, listen and, you know, grapple with the issues until she got a good hold of them. And, you know, I really, really enjoyed having you on the commission and serving with you. I can only stand to let you go because I know you're going to go do something more fun.
And Mary, appreciate, honored to serve next to you all these years. I think we got on the same year, like I got on around October or something. But yeah, it's been an interesting ride and been, been fun, and appreciate the extra monitor for now, too. Look at stuff.
Mary, save a spot on the patio for me. I'll be about to see you soon.
Thank you, Commissioner Coffey, very much. Been, been a pleasure to have you, and again, thank you for your service so much.
Okay, appreciate everybody's patience.
With that, we figure that Commissioner Coffey had to sit there the whole time for five years through all the meetings, so she should be first on the agenda today. That seems right. With that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We do have two items on the agenda today. Would you like to read those, Mr. Butler?
Yes, the first, please. Turn on the mic. First item is case PC 10794, application to rezone 9500 West Reno Avenue from AA to I-2. And the second item is case C 7416, final plat of Stone Point Office Park, located north of southwest 149th Street and west of south Santa Fe Avenue.
Okay, is there anybody here that wanted to be heard on one of those two items? Seeing none, if there's no discussion from commissioners on those, I'll take a motion to approve the consent docket.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent docket.
Okay, I have a motion. It's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast, and those items are approved. Next item is, first item requiring separate vote. This is item number three on today's agenda. Mr. Butler?
This is PUD 1883, application to rezone 10601 West Britton Road from AA to PUD 1883.
Okay, applicant with us?
Afternoon. Dean Colita, Civil and Environmental Consultants, representing the applicant on this rezoning application to a PUD. So as you can see, the PUD application is going to be a single family and duplex. Majority of it's going to be single family. You know, it does meet the comprehensive plan and is compatible with the area, providing connectivity to the neighborhood that's to the west, and we have several access points on Britton and also off of Sarah Road. Maybe you can see the layout, there's an existing oil well that they were kind of trying to buffer the single family with some duplex around there. It'll kind of be a separate little area, and then the rest of it would be, you know, single family lots, and we do agree to all the TEs. If you've got any questions, be happy to answer anything.
Okay, thank you very much. Before I turn this over to Commissioner Clare, because this is his ward, I would say this, we did receive a number of late protests on this that were kind of circulating via email. So if you submitted an email to city staff and you're here today, I believe those were circulated to us, and then there was, there was one circulated to me that was labeled before the meeting, received today, that came to the city clerk's office. So I'm going to circulate this around just for, give commissioners a chance, in case this was, wasn't, not included in the email, I want to make sure they've had a chance to see it.
We did, we did receive the notices.
Okay, excellent. Commissioner Clare, with that, sir, I'll turn it over to you. You can lead our discussion on the item.
Thank you. Yes, I did, I did receive several emails. I don't know if we have anyone present today to speak on this item.
I do have a couple of folks.
Okay, all right. Well, I think, you know, my, my major concerns with the development, I mean, I think it's, according to Plan OKC, it fits, this area is ripe for development. My only concern, and we've seen this in a number of developments in this area, is the infrastructure out here, the roadway infrastructure is awful, and adding, adding rooftops out here is only going to worsen that, but we seem to take the approach that more houses will incentivize the city to repair roads and improve roads. So I'm anxious to hear what, what the residents have to say, so.
Okay. My only question, Mr. Colita, is on your application, staff has a comment, a TE, that just says lots of abutting, existing single family subdivision must be at least 75% of the abutting lot size. You're in agreement with that?
We're fine with that, yeah.
You're fine with that?
And most of them already are because we have cul-de-sacs there, so we have to adjust a little bit, but.
Well, that's the numbers that were included, the numbers that were included, I mean, I can barely make them out, obviously, in print.
Yeah.
Which that diagram that's on the screen currently was in our packet, and it looked like they were 7,500 feet, which is why I was curious about the TE.
Yeah, there may have been one that was a little bit less, but we can, we agree to that. We can adjust a lot size to be minimum 7,500. So yeah, not a problem.
All right, well, let's see what other folks have that are concerned on this item. I have a couple of people sign up to speak, and the first person I have is Susan Clark. Ms. Clark, are you with us? Come on up, ma'am. Start out by giving us your name and address, okay?
My name is Susan Clark. I live at 10329 Sundance Drive. I'm the fourth house from Sarah Road.
To the west? To the, to the, on the west side?
Yes.
Got it.
And we have, everyone I've talked to has been very unhappy about this because we moved out there, we chose that property in 2001 because it was quiet, peaceful, had a view, space, and now that's all going to be gone. And like you mentioned, the traffic impact is going to be horrendous because the roads out there are really bad, and when the county comes and fixes them, sometimes they're even worse than they were before. Because there's one particular spot by our road that if traffic is coming from either way, I sit at the stop sign and just wait until everyone has gone by because you have to drive around it or you're going to ruin your tires and your car because there's a sharp thing that sticks out. And also besides that, the water pressure out there is really poor, always has been. So with the addition of this and the other pud unit on the other side of the road that's proposed, it'll be even worse. And besides the peace and serenity, it's the impact of the wildlife. We have deer, we have bald eagles, we have a whole number of things. My husband and I feed the geese and ducks all the time for the pond. It used to be a lake. It's gradually disappearing, not only because we have drought right now, but it's also from the lack of the runoff because of construction. And with this going in with a possibility, let's say, three person per household, that's 1,032 people that will be living back there. If I had wanted to live in a crowded, congested community, I would have chosen one. I chose this because it offers me peace and quiet. And with all this coming on, we may have to change the name of Sundance Lakes to Sundance Puddles because it's just, it's getting ridiculous. God, I don't know, it's just, this has upset so many people. I talked to a neighbor across the street, they didn't receive a letter because they're not impacted by it, but everybody's impacted by it, everyone, because of the situation of the roads, the water, just, you know, the, the crime is going to go up. It's just because when you get that many people involved, you're bound to have issues.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. We appreciate you coming down today.
I do have a question from Ms. Clark.
Sure.
Is there anything in your mind from where you stand that the applicant could do to, that you would be in agreement with, with this development?
Not open it.
Not open it? Not develop?
Because that, that land is really rough. There's going to have to be a lot of field dirt to come in. So how's that going to impact our property and what's going to happen to our residents' property value?
Okay. Thank you very much for being with us today. We appreciate it. Also, I have, and forgive me if I say this name incorrectly, it's certainly not intentional, Amanda Sapcutt. Did I get close?
You got it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Sapcutt, if you would, give us your name and address for the record, and then just to kind of summarize what Ms. Clark said, obviously, she's concerned about the roads, water infrastructure, wildlife. She mentioned crime concerns, and then also issues with just the notice requirement provided by the city. Is there anything else besides those items that you'd like for us to know about?
Yes, so my name's Amanda Sapcutt. I'm at 9904 East Blake Place. We are the, we're Sundance Ridge, which is the addition just to the west of this proposed addition. Our home would abut the neighborhood, we're the farthest north and east property in Sundance Ridge. So when we, we're in kind of the same boat. When we bought our lot, when we agreed to build there, we fell in love with the location, with the serenity, with the feeling of being more rural, yet, you know, good access to, to the city and everything like that, too. We wanted that for our family. Our lots in our neighborhood are also no less than half an acre, some up to three quarters and almost one acre as well. Sundance Lakes is all one acre lots and larger as well. So we do have concerns with the size of the lots, the number of properties. Same thing with crime, with roads, with infrastructure. It is not uncommon on a daily basis for us to have water pressure issues in our neighborhood, and it is across the board. Our, we're not fully against the growth and the expansion with these projects. Our concerns are that the infrastructure is not there to help us maintain a good, solid way of life. The city hasn't shown us any effort to improve our roads, other than after Redstone Elementary or Intermediate went in a couple of years ago, there was a little bit of a road expansion to that end, but with this added traffic, our roads are narrow, there are several hills, there are dangerous intersections, and it, we do have great concern about that, and unfortunately, some of the ways the roads were expanded with turning lanes, people have a tendency to ignore them. So it does create some, some scary situations, also dodging potholes, and as Ms. Clark said, the fixes for these challenges sometimes make things worse rather than better. We ourselves have repaired or replaced at least three. We ourselves have repaired or replaced at least three tires and rims in the last year just due to the, I mean, large, massive potholes that we see and the lack of attention to really expand those roads and make them safer for everyone. The other issue, again, is with the utilities, with safety, with fire, and first responders and police. We've seen an increased amount of crime with the added developments further to the west. That's adding quite a few more homes already that direction, west of Mustang Road and out to Piedmont Road as well. We've had break-ins, we've had vehicles stolen out of garages, we've had homes broken into, and that is somewhat challenging as we are a private roads and gated community. We're still seeing that as an issue in our neighborhood and the surrounding area there in Surrey. Lastly, we do have a lot of concerns with our schools as well. We are UConn School District, these would continue to be UConn School District, and our brand-new school that's only two years old is bursting at the seams already. Surrey Hills has been bursting at the seams. They moved their pre-K to Redstone to support that. And again, we're losing teachers because they're overwhelmed. And by adding more and more students, how is the city going to support all of these additional families and these kids to make sure that our kids are continuing to get a great education? A lot of the reason people move to this area is for UConn schools. We're proud of that, and we appreciate that, but we want to make sure that we continue to offer that and can maintain that. Piedmont is also bursting at the seams. So I believe Sundance Lakes is a part of Piedmont School District where this neighborhood, as well as the addition to the east, would also be UConn schools. So I think that's all I have, but we appreciate you hearing our concerns. Again, we're not against the growth and the progress of the city, but we just want to make sure it's done in the right way to allow everyone to maintain our property values and protect what we have invested in.
Yeah, we understand that, and we appreciate you coming down today, Ms. Sapcutt, very much. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Oh, one more thing. I did, I am our HOA president, so we, I do have a collection of about, how many signatures? Just over 39 signatures over the last 24 hours. We did hear quite a few concerns, along with Ms. Clark's concern. We abut the neighborhood, so we received a notice, but this does affect everyone in this area, not just those homes that are going to be backing up to it. It is added cost for us as well because we're private roads to protect and maintain our streets. We would have to add an additional gate there on 95th. So it does increase that expense for our neighborhood and our community as well.
Okay. So you, you are private roads in your community?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Sundance Lakes and Sundance Ridge are both private. We are gated, they are not. But we do have gates at all of our entrances to protect that safety. But we do still see people ignoring the gates with added traffic in that direction. We have people coming in through our exit gates, causing challenges and issues, and we're very fortunate we haven't had any accidents to date. But unfortunately, we've had some very, very close calls and very near misses. We see it a lot with the construction vehicles especially. And our fear is that they're going to continue to come, or attempt to come through our neighborhood and to access there at 95th.
Okay, so a couple of questions. So, so Brit, West Britton and Sundance Ridge Road, you have a gate at that location?
That's correct.
Okay. So if this developer were to propose, as recommended by Plan OKC, to interconnect on 95th Street, you would need a gate?
That's correct.
At that location?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll ask you the same question I asked Ms. Clark. Is there anything in your mind or the homeowners association that the applicant could do to have you be in agreement with the application?
I think to protect our property values, especially if the neighborhood was proposed with larger lot sizes, to align better with what Sundance Ridge and Sundance Lakes are, that might change some minds, as far as that goes. But overall, until the roads are improved and expanded, until the infrastructure for water, for utilities, I mean, I work from home on a daily basis, and we expect it here in Oklahoma with wind and weather that we have power flashes and surges, but I get flickering almost on a daily basis. And so to add those additional homes that need to be serviced, there is a lot of improvement that needs to be done for utilities to be able to support that many additional homes and families as well.
Thank you very much for coming down. We appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clare, that's the last person I have signed up to speak, so I don't know if you have thoughts or comments you want to share at this point.
Could I, could I ask the applicant, have you met with the neighbors at all?
We have not. We just got the letter this morning. We'd be happy to do that, just to kind of get their concerns. We don't have a problem doing that if we need to. We just, you know, this morning is when we got the letters. We figured it was kind of the same. But you know, when it comes to water infrastructure, you know, we do have to design those per-city standards and DQ standards, and you know, if the pressure is an issue, we have to deal with that during the design phase. In regards to the roads, I know in the future, they do have bond issues east and west on Britton that become up here in the next couple, either next year or the year after. So there's obviously, and this is going to be an overlay-type project, so obviously there's plenty to do stuff out here for the roads. As for this section, when it's going to happen, I assume they kind of connect those. So I know that there's plans out for Britton to be, you know, improved with the condition of the road. So, you know, and like I said, we're, you know, the products are going to be, it's varying product, the lot sizes, you know, 51, 61, and there's some duplex. So it'll be varying products. It's a, you know, quality developer, so it's, you know, I think it's going to be a nice community, and he's going to have some amenities and whatnot. And when it comes to the, the natural environment, there is a blue line stream through the property that we are avoiding. So we have allotted around that blue line, so the, you know, native, all the streams and everything will be, will be held natural except for where we cross with a couple of roads here or there. So we're trying to keep the environment, you know, as is in regards to that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, usually, you know, in instances like this, we, you know, asked the applicant to meet with the, the neighborhood, having heard some of their concerns. I mean, the one we heard was, you know, the only way that she would agree with it is if you don't develop it. Well, that's, that's not feasible. And, and something else that we heard was utility and infrastructure. We kind of talked about that. So really, the only thing that I hear is lot sizes. So, you know, I know you guys have a pro forma that you have to make, make the development work. Do you guys, would you, would you consider if meeting with the neighborhood is, is looking at lot sizes, increasing lot sizes, are you open to that?
I'd have to talk with the developer on that.
That's, I'm, all I'm trying to get at is, you know, what, is it going to do any good to meet with the neighborhood association?
I mean, I think the product style, yeah, go ahead.
Can you bring the plot, the flat map back up?
Could you give us your name and address for the record?
Jake Shuffler, Noble Real Estate Holdings. I'm the owner of the property.
Okay. And what is your, what's your address?
Oh, 847 King and Oak Drive.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
If you look at the, the lot sizes currently, a lot of the lots that back up to the neighborhood in those cul-de-sacs are already well over. And then I wish we had a geographical map. The lots on the north, there is quite a bit of a green space buffer that backs up the house. So yes, in certain areas, you know, I don't mind increasing lot size, but a lot of it's already insulated as it is.
Yeah, with the blue line stream through there, the way it's kind of irregularly shaped, there is some lots that are actually much larger. And the way the spacing is on the south side there, those lots are most definitely about the same size roughly as the neighborhood to the, to the west. So there are larger lot sizes here just because of the way it's shaped and because of that blue line stream we had to avoid. And so there's density where the duplex is, but that's kind of just a buffer around that oil well site. So, you know, at the end of the day, the lot sizes most definitely are bigger than the minimum per the R1.
If I could, if I could. Although I really appreciate you taking the effort to draw out the folks who've come down to speak to us today about what their concerns are. The fact that, you know, a couple of people who are sort of put on the spot, you know, is there something that would solve this problem for you and don't have a ready answer that seems feasible to us, you know, doesn't mean that it wouldn't do you some good to meet with the neighbors and listen to their concerns and see whether there are questions that they have that you can answer, issues that they have that you can address. I myself look at this application, it's very dense, but that's just me. I think, you know, there's all kinds of ways to ameliorate development, and I, I would strongly recommend that you take the time to meet with your neighbors.
No, I, I agree, and like we said.
Yeah, to be clear, there was no letters of opposition included in our packets, nor did we receive any notice of opposition, I think, until today.
Morning, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So I'm, I'm definitely up for that, and I know, I know, I know Dean is.
Yeah, I mean, we can continue for the next meeting and.
It should be March the 24th.
You want to do that?
Two weeks, two weeks give you enough time to set something up with the neighbors?
Should.
Okay. Just from another vantage point, I will just share that I would encourage Ms. Clark, and particularly Ms. Sapcutt, to go back and talk to the neighbors as your, in your role as HOA president. I will generally be supportive of this application for a variety of reasons I think we can discuss when they, when they come back. But if there's any other comments that we want to provide to both the applicants or the neighbors as they go for two weeks to discuss it and try to come back and get a resolution, this would be the time to share those. My comments would just generally be, with, with deep respect on the 2001 comment, Ms. Clark, our city is changing rapidly. 2022 is not 2001 in Oklahoma City. We're adding 10,000-plus residents a year. Last year in Oklahoma City, as a municipality, we had about 6,800 building permits. You can see that we're running at a real deficit to housing. It's a major problem. Our infrastructure is just not keeping pace with the development. When you look at the application, there have been some applications recently approved that would allow similar-type housing, and our staff report does tell us, fire said there were no concerns in this area, police did not return any comments for this area, traffic management neglected to provide any comments of concern for the area. So we hear you, but the city staff is telling us, along with their recommendation, that this area is ripe for this type of development, which is why I'm inclined to be generally supportive. So I'm glad that you are willing to take the two weeks, but that's my feedback. Does anybody else have anything they want to add? Commissioner Highsmith?
I echo your comments, and I would add in addition, we hear the property value comment quite a bit. I would recommend that you guys go back and do a little bit of your own research. We take that comment seriously, and I've done hours of my own research on, on this as a potential issue, and we find that it's actually the opposite, right? This type of housing comes into your area because people want to be there. There's a desire, and where there's demand, housing prices go up. We've also, I've also personally reached out to the Oklahoma Assessor Association to understand how they appraise homes and appraise value in areas like this where there are differing lot sizes. And I've been assured that where these different product types exist, they do not affect one another. So it's just been my, my research and my own, you know, good faith effort on this side shows that that's, that's not the case generally. I would also say that, you know, while, while more people might mean more crime, the crime rate across, you know, all populations is fairly stable. So I don't think that you're getting more, you know, criminals just because you're getting more neighbors. I would, you know, I would look at them as, as an addition to your neighborhood rather than a detraction. And finally, I would say, while I think we all enjoy open space, you know, this is, this is America, and we value private property rights here, and unless you own a piece of land, you can never guarantee what its, what its future will be. And, you know, if you were given assurances when you bought these properties that that land would always stay open space, then someone was lying to you. And, and it was likely the Realtor, and we can't control that here. So that's, those would be my additions to, to the comments.
Okay. Any other comments or comments?
Yeah, just, just a quick comment. I, I would like to see all of the areas directly west and north be, definitely be larger lots. I also am sensitive to the density issue. The fact that the, all of the properties to the, further to the west that you don't own are, are R1 properties, I, I, I respect that. I think that makes a lot of sense for us, for this entire lot to be R1 versus having the duplexes. I'm also, but on the other hand, I know that on the other side, on the east side, PUD 1776 is all R1, too, right? So I think those are just things to keep in mind, and I'm glad that you're willing to visit with the neighbors. So, thank you.
So my one last comment, I, I do appreciate you taking the time to meet with neighbors. I would encourage you to go into that with, you know, your ears open. I will say, though, to the neighbors, it will, it will, near to your benefit to focus on the issues that the developers can do something about. Schools are not within our purview, and we, we all lament the overcrowding of these schools, especially in these areas on the fringe of Oklahoma City where people move because there are good schools, and then there are more people, and then the schools are, you know, overcrowded. And that is a vicious cycle that we all lament but have no power to effect. So I would keep focused on the things that the developer can actually control.
Jeff, is the, the private road connection, was that an error, or was that assumed to be a crash gate type deal after the fact, or?
The private road connection is.
We would normally connect to them, right? To a private road?
The thing about private roads is they often will become public roads at some point in the future.
Okay.
When residents realize has, you know, it often happens when they realize how expensive it is to resurface their streets, and then they become public, and so in that case, it would be advisable.
Okay. Got it.
Can I address that? Because we have already been discussing that as an HOA.
If, Ms. Sapcutt, if you do want to add any comment, I have to have you come back up to the podium, because there's at least four people at home that want to hear what you're saying.
Just to add to the roads, we, when we did establish our HOA three years ago, we understood our roads were starting to fail and needed some maintenance. We have come to the city to discuss what would need to be done to move our roads to public roads for the city to maintain, and it is, at that time, was well over $280,000 just for our neighborhood to resurface those roads and get them up to the city's standard to care for those roads. We have also taken out bids to fix our cracks, resurface, and seal, and two years ago, that was $50,000 just to repair what was already there. That price, obviously, with, with inflation and everything else, is probably more than double now.
Yeah.
So we do have concerns as far as the wash goes. The other thing, too, with 95th abutting and adjoining into that neighborhood, again, that gate cost, that expense, that protection, and that, the division or the border there between the two neighborhoods, we do have a pond on that side of the neighborhood that we're responsible for with safety and maintaining that common area as well. We get a lot of wash through there, as Ms. Clark was saying. Everything does tend to flow that direction into their lake as well. And so there are some concerns with safety and people coming onto our property and potentially posing a risk of, you know, harm and accidents and things like that. And we do want to make sure that there is a good understanding or a good separation to protect.
Got it.
Them as well as us.
Yeah. These are great things to share. I know Mr. Colita will be super responsive. He always has been in the past to other neighbors' concerns. So at this point, we'll let you guys take the two weeks and visit about it, and we'll come back March the 24th and talk about it some more.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
So if there's no discussion, we have agreement from the applicant for March the 24th. He's nodding in agreement, so if you're prepared to make the motion, Commissioner Clare, I'll take it at this time.
I move to continue item PUD 1883 to the March 24th meeting.
Okay. I have a motion to continue PUD 1883 to March the 24th. It's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that continues. It's also approved. Thank you, Mr. Colita. We appreciate it. All votes should be cast, and that item, Commissioner Hinkle.
Yes.
Are you on presentation? There you go. Commissioner Hinkle just needed a little assistance. And that item is continued until the 24th. Next item on the agenda is the companion item. Mr. Butler, you want to read it just for the record?
Yes, item 4, KC 7418, preliminary plat of Rose Valley located north of West Britton Road and west of North Sarah Road.
Yes, Dean Colita, Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4045 Northwest 64th Street. As a companion to this, we would request to continue this to the 24th as well.
I think that seems reasonable. I'll take the motion at this time. Move to continue C 7418 to the March 24th meeting. Okay. I have a motion to continue C 7418 to the March 24th meeting. It's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that continues as also approved. Thank you, Mr. Cletus, we appreciate it, and thank you to the neighbors for joining us today. Ms. Clark, Ms. Sapkett, it's a pleasure to have you.
Next item on today's agenda is item number five. Mr. Butler.
This is case PC 10796, application to rezone 12700, Southeast 52nd Street, from AA to RA2, single-family, two-acre rural presidential district.
Good afternoon. Mark Zizaw with Johnson &amp; Associates, 1 East Sheridan Avenue. Mr. Butler summed it up. This is a fairly straightforward application to RA2. We've, I believe, attached a site plan with this. It's all minimum two-acre lots on the backside with shared common area, and then there will be actually two five-acre tracks along Southeast 44th. We've received no protest or, and no neighbors have reached out to our office to answer any questions, so with that, we'd ask for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Zizaw. I have no known protest, nobody signed up to speak on this item. This is Commissioner Privet's ward, so I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Yep. Mark, how many lots total? I think it was in here, but I forget.
Sorry, let me just look at the, I don't know why it wasn't in the packet. There will be 10 two-acre lots kind of south of the blue line that crosses, and there are two five-acre tracks on the frontage.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any issues with it. Somebody signed up to speak? If not, we can make a motion.
Okay. One thing I will just make note of, Mr. Zizaw, in the staff report from fire says if creating lots less than five acres without city water supply, water tanks for firefighting or sprinklers are needed. You aware of that comment?
We are, we assume we will address that at the plating stage, but that is not something that, they can't agree to sprinkle, but we'll, you know, we'll work through that with them at the final plat stage.
Okay, understood. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on PC 10796? All right, seeing nobody, if there's no further discussion from commissioners, Commissioner Privet, I'll take your motion.
I'll move to recommend approval to City Council, PC 10796.
Okay. I have a motion, recommend approval to City Council on PC 10796. There are no technical evaluations. It was seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval. Good luck. Next item is item number six.
This is case PC 10797, application to rezone 1701 Northwest 12th Street from R2 to R4.
Sam Gresham, 400 Northwest 23rd. I'm the owner of the property. I'm asking for straight zoning in order to redevelop the church building that is located on that site. It's an existing building with an existing parking lot and some small amount of land area associated with it. I'd like to build four units inside the church. It's currently zoned R2, and I need R4 to get that density on that property.
Understood. Well, welcome back to City Hall, Mr. Gresham.
Thank you.
Commissioner Highsmith, this is your ward, sir. Do you have comments or questions for the applicant?
Can you guys hear me? There we go. Sorry, I have mic issues. You know, I reviewed this. It's essentially a proposal to save the existing church. I think that's positive. It's a reuse of the church. I think that's positive. It prevents, you know, further densification of the land outside of adding the units. Generally, this seems to be a pretty easy approval to me, so without comment, I'd be ready to make a motion.
Okay. I don't have anybody signed up to speak, but of course, I'll ask, is there anybody that wants to be heard today on PC 10797? Seeing nobody, if there's no further discussion from commissioners, we will take your motion.
Make a motion to recommend approval on PC 10797 to City Council.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PC 10797. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet, it looked like, before it was taken away. Paula giveth and she taketh away. No TEs on this item. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast.
Just kidding.
An item is recommended for approval. Thank you, Mr. Gresham. Next item on today's agenda is item number seven.
This is PUD 1884, application to rezone 8113, Sunny Lane Road, from PUD 1884.
Good afternoon. Mark Zizaw with Johnson &amp; Associates, 1 East Sheridan Avenue. This is an application that I believe you will all be familiar with. I believe last year, we had filed a PUD for this portion of the land, land to the north and land to the west, for various industrial, commercial, and single-family uses. There is the softball complex that is immediately to our west. A new developer has taken over the bulk of this property and has changed the layout to not, and is not desiring, single-family homes in this particular piece of the property. And so we filed an application to seek some commercial and light industrial uses. We've included landscape buffers and protections for distances from any speaker boxes. There are no TEs, and with that, we'd ask for your approval.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zizaw. Commissioner Privet, this is your ward, sir, so I'll let you lead our discussion.
Okay. I kind of like this better than what we had, so good with it. It's like it's probably just small retail, I-1 at the most, right? Or I-2, I mean.
That's what they're envisioning, and a couple items later, you're going to see the preliminary plat.
Yeah.
So there's going to be a shared boulevard, public street that will serve the balance of the property, and I'll talk to some of those items in relation to the ball field when we get to that item.
Which I'm interested to see who moves in next to a softball field, but whatever. Okay, I'm good. If nobody signed up to speak, we're ready to make a motion.
Okay. I do not have anybody signed up to speak, but I will ask the question, is there anybody that'd like to be heard on PUD 1884?
Can I ask a quick, can I ask a question?
Of course.
That is, it says that on the electronic displays, it shall be consistent with C3. What does C3 allow with the electronic messages? That might be something for staff, too. They know all.
Yeah, I would defer with staff. The intent here is there's an impending adoption of a new sign code and that we will meet the new regulations within C3. If that's working through the process, it's hard to imagine that any building can get through permitting and constructed prior to that occurring, but I would defer to JJ on the specific regulations in C3.
Currently, C3 would allow all three levels of EMD, 1, 2, and 3.
And what does the new code allow for?
I'm, I'm where we are on the new code right now.
I believe it still allows for EMD signage.
Okay. I mean, if the new code is going through the process of being adopted and would allow for it, I'm in agreement with you that I don't know why we're going to continue to try to talk about each one of them independently. That's the purpose of negotiating the sign code, so.
And if the EMDs were north of the site, I'd be concerned as far as the south, for sure.
Yeah, I'm not opposed, even if they were. I was just curious.
Yeah, right. I can see where there could be an issue there on the north end, though, close to the houses, but probably not a good spot to put them anyways.
Right. I would just point out, too, just for the purposes of, you know, kind of clarifying some things we've talked about in the past, the applicant's including a 15-foot landscape buffer with evergreen plantings on 20-foot centers. When commercial or industrial uses are adjacent to single-family residential uses, that's what we've tried to incorporate in almost every instance, where we put commercial next to residential, so you're meeting that standard here. It's reasonable, and I appreciate that. That was the reason I reached out to you for the PUD. I knew you'd have a copy of that at the ready, so, and I just wanted to make sure I understood how it laid out, and that was, of course, before I got in my packet to the plat item that we're going to see, so.
Anything on a Sunday afternoon that I can help you with?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Happy to do so.
If I'm reading the packet, you can send me an email, so. At any rate, if there's no further discussion from...
Yeah, two things. I had understood that the development would be governed by C3. Mr. Privet seemed to indicate that there might be some I-1 or even I-2 uses on the property. Is that accurate?
Our base zoning is C3, but we do allow for light industrial. But we have not sought any outdoor storage or outdoor industrial uses.
Okay, so that's my big concern, and...
Okay, yeah, so 83, 50.8 only? Well, and then some wholesale storage and distribution maybe? Custom manufacturing.
So storage and sales and activity all endorse?
Yes.
Custom manufacturing is actually a retail use.
Yeah, it is.
It's kind of a, it's kind of a weird...
Like t-shirt business type dealer?
JJ actually does a pretty good job of summing this up. It's essentially like, can you give an example, JJ? You're always good with that. Custom manufacturing?
Jewelry and candle making.
Jewelry, that's the one he uses.
Jewelry and t-shirts and just small stuff, small mechanical equipment.
Not an industrial use.
Right.
Yeah.
And we would not be opposed to a TE, just further clarifying that outdoor storage of any kind would not be permitted.
That's fine, we know that.
The other issue I have, regardless of where we are in the process of developing the sign code, I do not want EMD signage that's going to be visible from those residential properties to the east. That's not okay.
So I think in this application, we're not necessarily seeking to do EMD. I think the intent is, if a citywide process has just occurred that has determined that C3 is going to be acceptable, potentially on this site, and there are restrictions to single-family or any sort of residential, we're just seeking to adhere to what the city is likely going to adopt. And I think that's been part of the...
You know, while I understand that argument, I would also say that you're reselling this into a PUD, which means that there's a negotiated process going on, we're also redoing the, you know, development code, and we may do away with PUDs, but that doesn't stop us from using them now. I would not want to see EMD signage visible from those residential properties to the east. That's a deal breaker for me.
Understood.
Any other commissioners have comments?
So are you, can you agree to just require that the signage be, the electronic signage be on the, I guess, the east side, not the west side, right?
Yeah, we can agree to all the, and I'll look at Commissioner Hinkle. The typical language where it's shielded, it's not directed, we can agree to all of that. I have a little hesitation, just really from an equity issue of any future property that is developed to C3. If you were to look north of here, it's a lot of C3, C4, and industrial uses, but they're not granted the same access to the new sign code. The new sign code's going to have smaller signage, and I would think will help alleviate some of that concern.
I'm not as familiar with the new sign code presentation as I am with the old one, but basically, probably what you would be allowed now is 100 square feet at ground level. So if there's a building between you and the residents to the west, there wouldn't be any, but the light deflecting louvers is always a good thing.
Yep. My concern is more the ones on the east side of Sunny Lane than the ones coming on the And they get farther away from the road as far south you get. I think there could be a spot where, you know, it could be fine and not be seen from their backyard. I think that's where we're at on that.
I mean, for background and context, there was discussion coming in with potentially an I-1 or an I-2 straight rezoning application, but given that we were abutting a neighborhood that the same developer was constructing, and we knew that likely landscape buffers and screening were going to be a point that would like to be addressed in more detail, that's what led us to the PUD. So ultimately, again, if it's the desire of the commission to remove EMD, you know, we're willing to do that. It's really just, there's a new sign code, and in theory, that sign code should be addressing the concerns about EMDs in proximity to neighborhoods, height, brightness, light direction, and all of the things that we've sought to specifically negotiate in these PUDs.
When we have a new sign code, then we'll use it.
Commissioner Privet, I think it's, you know, I mean, you, we need to settle on what we're actually asking of them.
Well, he's fine with no EMDs. I'm fine with no EMDs.
I'm fine with no EMDs, too.
Okay. So the applicant's in agreement to prohibit EMD signage?
Great. I got that as TE, too. TE1, no outdoor storage.
Any other comments?
I think that's it.
Okay. Well, if there's no further discussion, let me just verify, I think I already asked, but just in matter of abundance of caution, anybody want to be heard on PUD 1884?
Okay, you got any dumpsters?
50 feet.
Scott?
We got those in there.
Okay. All right, I'll recommend approval of PUD 1884 to City Council.
Subject to?
Subject to TE1, no outdoor storage, and TE2 to remove the use of EMD signage.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PUD 1884. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. It's subject to the technical evaluations as amended and read into the record by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval. Thank you, Mr. Zizaw.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item number eight.
This is SPOD 1392, application to rezone 3301 Southeastern Avenue from R1, single-family, SPOD 760 and SPOD 1251 to SPOD 1392.
Applicant with us? Applicant on SPOD 1392? All right, well, this train's going to keep rolling. We're going to push this to the end of the docket. Next item on the agenda today is item number nine.
Item nine is KC 7415, final plat of Ironstone Commercial Phase 2, located east of North Portland Avenue and south of Northwest 164th Street. Here's a variance to Table 5.1 in Section 5.3.2.8 of the subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Dean Colita, Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4045 Northwest 64th Street, representing the applicant. This is the second phase of the Ironstone commercial on the original packet there. You know, the intentions are already provided, utilities are kind of already stubbed out for this deal. On the variance, if you zoom in, we actually are stubbing out to the south, and there will be a new road built in the future for the new project coming in, so I'm not exactly sure we need a variance for that, because we are going to connect to the south for that road. But if, you know, if the variance is, you know, allowed, then that's fine for what we're doing, so.
So is the road being developed in conjunction with...
The road to the south will be put in with a separate owner to the east there, and if you go back to the overall plat, see the PUD 1593, they're required to connect to Lake After Parkway when they build there, and actually, I think they're in the process of designing that, so that road will have to go in with that development, and we are connecting, and we're stubbing out to connect to it.
Okay. I'm kind of curious, from staff's perspective, if it would be better for us to still require the variance, but that would then permanently allow a long cul-de-sac. Without it, they'd have to put the street in, right? Am I thinking about that the right way?
Yeah, the cul-de-sac would be there regardless, and it may be there from now on, but there is an option to connect to the south.
Okay. So the staff, so even with that information, staff's preference would be to...
Yeah.
Okay, understood. And we got a looped water issue. I'm not even going to try to sound like I know what I'm talking about. I just remember this has come up multiple times. We don't have that issue here? Okay, so water says that's not an issue. Okay, well, this is my ward. I've not received any comments. I don't have anybody signed up to speak. Is there anybody that'd like to be heard on C 7415? Okay. I can't make a motion, or if I could, I'd make a motion to approve the variance as outlined in TE2. Somebody wants to do that? Somebody, anybody?
I will move to approve the variance to Section 5.3.2.8 of the subdivision regulations.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the variance as outlined in our staff report. It's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Please cast your votes. This item needs six votes to pass. All votes should be cast, and that item is, the variance is approved. Now, just need a motion on the item, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve C 7415.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the final plat for C 7415, Ironstone Commercial Phase 2. It's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. Subject to the TEs. Thank you. All votes should be cast, and that item is also approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good luck with your project. Next item on the agenda is item 10.
This is KC 7417, preliminary plat of Sunnyvale Estates, located south of I-240 Highway This is KC 7417, preliminary plat of Sunnyvale Estates, located south of I-240 Highway and west of South Sunny Lane Road, and a variance to Section 5.3.1. D. 5 of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon, Mark Zizow with Johnson &amp; Associates. This is a preliminary plat for a property that was zoned a little over a year ago. There was a lot of discussion at the time with the Parks Department. These ball fields are being redone, and they have some challenging access issues. So, in the design of this, one of the things we've done is we have a common area that abuts the southern set of four ball fields, and then we also have a cul-de-sac. So, ultimately, we've provided public access to those fields for maintenance and other items. One of the other items that was discussed during the PUD stage was the number of lots that backed immediately up to the ball field. So, you could see that we've created a detention area and also common area along about half of the northern ball field. So, we've taken those into account. We've still provided the sub-street for the future development to the west, and we have determined the best access to the north, which is also a point of discussion, so there will be a new public street built out to the I-240 service road. Previously, it was a driveway, and there were questions about access easements that we were able to work through to create ultimately the safest backdoor to the neighborhood. So, with that, we'd ask for your approval.
Got it. Commissioner Privet, any questions on this item?
I've got a couple of friends that are pretty big softball fans that would probably like to live here.
I've got a client that would love to sell them some lots.
Catch fly balls in their backyard, maybe?
Is there anybody that wants to be heard on C 7417? Okay, well, if there's not, we've got a variance to contend with, I believe. First, Mr. Privet.
Yeah, and that's the south, they're talking about to the south, right, Mark?
That's correct. So, to the south, there's some industrial uses.
But there's R1.
And an oil operation. That's what's happening in the R1, so it's not true R1 there.
Well, what about the spot west of the business park?
So, I can provide you a little color there. I have some familiarity with that tract.
Right.
That tract is littered with...
Oh, wait, yeah, I remember this.
Oil and gas wells. There's probably 12 producing wells or active wells on that site. You can begin to see the pad sites there, but if you were to zoom out even further, you would see that, I mean, that area is covered up with them. It's a very active area. Stevens &amp; Johnson's engineering, or Stevens &amp; Johnson's drilling, excuse me, that controls a huge area west back toward Crossroads Mall and has really developed this whole kind of field for oil and gas. So, the odds that there's going to be residences there to connect to are real small. They own, Stevens &amp; Johnson actually owns that tract in Phoebe, so.
Yeah, I do remember that conversation now with the zoning. Okay, anybody signed up, or anybody else have any comments?
No, sir.
All right. I'll move approval of C 7417.
We need to do the variance first, if you want to move that variance.
Move the variance, Section 5.3.1. D. 5.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the variance. It's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and the variance is approved.
And then move approval of the item, C 7417, subject to the remainder, the TEs.
Okay. I have a motion to approve C 7417, subject to the technical evaluation. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is approved.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 11.
This is KC 7419, preliminary plat of Silverhorn Crossing, located west of North Kelly Avenue and south of East...
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Jeremy Bean with Grubbs Consulting.
Address?
1800 South St. Road.
Welcome, okay. Tell us what you need to know.
We prepared this preliminary plat based on the recently approved PUD 1841. We have reviewed all the TEs in the staff report and agreed to those, so we'd ask that you please approve this.
So, you are in agreement with all the TEs?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, Commissioner Pennington, this is your word, sir.
No questions or concerns for me.
Okay, I do not have anybody sign up to speak, but I'll ask, is there anybody that would like to be heard on C 7419? Okay, seeing nobody, if there's no further discussion from commissioners, I'll take your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve C 7419.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the plat for C, preliminary plat for C 7419. It's been seconded by Commissioner. Powers or Highsmith, or both?
I've got TEs.
Subject to the technical evaluations. Which the applicant's in agreement with. Yeah, the, yeah, the motion was actually made by Commissioner Pennington, if we want to correct that. There we go. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that preliminary plat is approved. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Next item is item 12.
This is PUD 1880, application to rezone 10800 Southwest 44th Street from AA to PUD 1880.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. The PUD before you seeks to develop this site in a similar manner to the other corners in that we will retain an approximately seven-acre tract on the corner for commercial. The land behind it will be R1 Single Family. That is, in essence, what's happened on all three other corners. There are three TEs. We do agree to TE2 and 3. As it relates to TE1, we did work with staff. There were some recent attempts to lower the speed limit along Mustang Road. That's ODOT-controlled, those attempts failed. So, staff is comfortable with us not providing vehicular access. We can agree to provide pedestrian access, so what I would propose is perhaps modify TE1 to add the word pedestrian in front of access, but then say that no vehicular is permitted. And my understanding is staff is comfortable with that approach. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. We believe it to be consistent and compatible with not only the comp plan, but the development pattern in the area.
Okay, and I will just say for the record, staff was acknowledging their agreement with Mr. Box's comment, so.
Thank you, staff.
This is in Commissioner Coffey's ward, she's not here, but if you're a resident in Ward 3, I assure you, our staff, or our staff and our commissioner are going to continue to look at those cases just as diligently as we would any other. So, I don't have anybody sign up to speak on this item, so I'll ask first if there's any commissioner who has questions or comments for the applicant.
Just a brief comment, I don't want to get into a whole big thing, but what's the issue with the access on the Mustang Road?
The traffic moves at such a high rate of speed there that coming out of a residential subdivision can create a problem in its proximity to the intersection. So, my understanding was that there was a recent attempt to lower the speed limit along Mustang Road. It is a state highway, but the nature of the area has changed. The attempt failed, and so because of that, we don't want to connect to... My belief is the speed limit is 55 through there. That's a pretty fast clip, and 55 really means 64, if you drive like some people do. So, with that, it's not like a typical subdivision that would exit onto an arterial. You'd be exiting onto a state highway where people are moving at an excessive rate of speed. So, we meet all access requirements. We don't believe we, you know, we have any problems, but we would prefer our accesses, our access points to go north to Southwest 44th Street, which operates like a typical arterial at a slower rate of speed.
Do you think that that will continue? I mean, when you, when the corner is developed, do you really think there won't be any access on the Mustang Road?
We will have pedestrian access, so there will be, you know, you can see the pedestrian easement on that site plan, so we will have the ability to get to the sidewalk that's on Mustang Road so that those folks can get to the commercial corner. But I do not believe that ODOT will change the speed limit along Mustang Road. It carries a significant volume of traffic, and it's only going to get more as this area keeps developing.
It's true that that's entirely likely, but at the same time, the residential development in the area is going to change the nature of that traffic, it seems to me.
I don't know if you dealt with ODOT when you were in practice.
Yes, yes, yes.
ODOT is run by, well, I don't believe ODOT's going to change.
Okay.
Good catch. Mr. Box, you and I discussed a landscape buffer between tracks 1 and 2. I understand there's an easement issue there. Could you share that with the commission, please?
So, based upon what Mr. Dillon has laid out, we have to maintain a portion of that for an easement, just because of how things fall. So, we can certainly, within the five-foot buffer, have that be a landscape buffer with trees on 20-foot centers, but we can't give more than that. But we believe with the screening and a landscape buffer of five feet with trees on 20-foot centers, that it will accomplish the goal that you have asked us to provide.
Yeah, I will say the screening regulation does specifically address the eastern and southern boundary of track 1, so that, you know, I appreciate that. Dumpster regulations in there, staff has included a TE for establishing a distance for use units, 8300.34, 8300.36, 8300.45, and 8300.46, for those of you following along at home. Those are drive-through order windows and gas stations that now have drive-throughs, because that's the thing.
Mr. Chairman, you are certainly an agent of change. As you will note in the PUD, specifically Section 9.6, you have conditioned people to just simply input 50 feet despite what the municipal code may say.
Yeah, well, treating neighbors with respect and ensuring compatibility between uses is our job, Mr. Box, and we're thrilled to do it.
Saves time.
Yep. We had a conversation about the landscape buffer, and, you know, so I just wanted to make sure the commission discussed that, and there wasn't any feedback there. My concern about these that come through is always that the commercial will develop after the residents, because, of course, the softball field people don't have to worry about that. That softball field is there right now. But these concern me, so, does that appease everyone's concern? I mean, the five-foot landscape buffer is narrow, but if they're still wanting to put the plantings there, I think that goes a long way, and the restriction from the uses of, that are really creating compatibility problems of the drive-through speakers have been addressed. So, I'm okay, I just want to make sure that we talk about it, and everybody else is too. So, again, I want to be extra thoughtful for the good residents of Ward 3 until they have a new representative.
We've got 20 on right now. 20 are watching us right now, so.
Right, yep.
Big number.
Okay, well, if there's no further discussion, we need a motion from somebody on the item, and I would like to make sure we incorporate the applicant's agreed language for the landscape buffer as a TE, as an additional TE. And we did amend TE1, which I'm happy to read if I need to.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of PUD 1880 with the following amendments to technical evaluations. Amending technical evaluation, number one, to read pedestrian access shall be provided to Mustang Road, and adding TE4 with the language as read into the record regarding landscape buffers.
Which would be a five-foot landscape buffer with trees planted on 20-foot centers.
Excellent.
And with that, I'll take the second on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith, so I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council on PUD 1880, subject to the amended technical evaluations as read into the record. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda today is item number 12. Oh, I'm so sorry, my fault, 13.
13 has been deferred.
14.
Hang on. Yep, sorry. 13 deferred to March 24th, 14, SPOUD 1391. Mr. Butler?
This is an application to rezone 1627 North Klein Avenue from R1 Single Family.
Ms. Brooks was here earlier. David Yellott Fallon out there, tell...
I can see her through the window.
Welcome, item 14.
Hello, sorry about that. Fallon-Brooks, 1605 North Classon Boulevard. Oh, this is just an accessory dwelling unit on... Just faces an alley. We're kind of trying to get in an apartment unit and an additional parking space. That's kind of why it's shifted over, over the five-foot line. And the existing house is already over the line too, so, in keeping with what's existing there, so.
Okay, this is Commissioner Highsmith, this is your ward, sir.
Yep. Met and discussed with the applicant. I have no concerns. This is a pretty easy add for me. Garage apartment and garage in a dense urban neighborhood, so, if there's no other comments, I'd be ready to make a motion.
All right, well, let's ask just to be sure, would anybody like to be heard today on SPOUD 1391? Nobody, okay. If there's no discussion from commissioners or concerns, I'll take your motion.
Can I, oh, go ahead. Commissioner Hinkle, you, you go ahead.
My question's easy. Did you like the Gin Blossoms the other night?
Hey, yeah, I did. No, it warmed my cold millennial heart.
Wait, were you there?
I was.
All right.
It was a great show, of course.
Hey, you know, my office is upstairs, so you guys come say hi next time. I was listening from my desk, anyway.
Then you were working too late.
My question, I'm going to vote for this, so my vote is not contingent on the answer to this question. So, low pressure. I've noticed that the, on the photo of what it's going to, of what it's going to look like, it looks like it's going to be a flat roof where people can, where you can go out and hang out on top, which I think is wonderful. I just wondered, is there any specific, like, rule or regulation with regard to that for us? Is that just always allowed in any residential area?
To my knowledge, there's nothing that would prohibit that. I'll let, if staff wants to comment. There have been a number of cases over the years, I forget in what manner we've had them, but whether a balcony or a covered terrace on a roof was considered a floor, and we've had all kinds of fun discussion, but...
Just rooftop occupancy is not considered an extra floor.
Okay.
Unless they added some, a room up there or something, just to occupy the roof isn't considered a story.
Would it be correct to say, though, that the height of the handrails included in the total height, or is it just the roof?
On a flat roof, it's going to be the total height.
To the handrail?
No.
Or to the guardrail?
No, just the roof deck.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, well, happy to make a recommendation of approval to City Council on SPOUD 1391. There are no TEs.
Okay, I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on SPOUD 1391. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. All right, we can cast our votes, please cast. All votes should be cast. And the item is? Commissioner Hinkle, let's strike two. One more, and she's going to hit the ejection button. And that item is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda today is item 15.
This is KC 7401, a preliminary plat of One Tree Park, located south of Southwest 15th Street and west of South County Line Road.
Welcome back, Mr. Zizou.
Good to be back. Mark Zizow, Johnson &amp; Associates, One East Sheridan Avenue. This is an item that we requested a continuance for two weeks ago. We received a letter that I hesitate to even call a protest letter, but it was one of, I think, the most well-written letters on an application that I had ever seen in my time doing this. And so, we reached out to the neighbor, set a meeting, and requested the continuance. We hosted that meeting last week. But the property before you, we were before you on November 18th requesting a rezone to straight R1 with a comprehensive plan amendment. Both of those items were ultimately recommended for approval and approved, and then City Council approved the zoning. So, this plat, as a staff report, notes conforms with the subdivision regulations and end with the zoning code. So, we reached out, we had our meeting, I think it was a very cordial, well-attended, positive meeting. Neighbors sent us eight questions in advance of the meeting with further clarification on some items that we were able to offer, and then discussion points included density, lot sizes, drainage, traffic, and impact fees, stub streets, tree preservation buffers, two-story homes, schools, parks, and amenities. And so, what the outcome of that meeting was, was us to kind of look at our design and challenge ourselves a little bit to be creative, which is why I appreciate Mr. Morris' letter. What we've agreed to pending Public Works approval, and they've done this in the past, on the southern lots, we're going to seek to move our sanitary sewer into the public right-of-way on the front of the lots, which would allow for a 15-foot tree preservation easement in lieu of the sanitary sewer easement that would have been in the backyard. So, I have some language that you'll see on the two final plats that come before you adjacent to that, that I'd be happy to read in. We're going to add a sub-street to the west, and then one of the other items that came out of it, you know, this is one of the interesting discussions about stub streets and connectivity through neighborhoods. The neighborhood to the south was designed with a very straight, basically straight street that they are already experiencing speeding on, so there was concern about the number of lots that we have ultimately taking access onto Westbrook Boulevard. So, what we've agreed, and ultimately, this, you know, wouldn't be a TE, it's a commitment that our firm has made with the neighborhood, we're going to assist them in applications to Traffic Commission for all-way stop controls in appropriate locations to help mitigate some of that concern, so.
So, the TE6 would be a street stub to the west?
That's correct, and then the TE7 potentially would be that a tree preservation easements will be provided on the two final plats adjacent. We're okay with that language. We have specific language that I can read in, but Jared Martin, who is not here, has always been our tree guy when it comes to easement language and making sure it's acceptable, and we haven't had time to run this by him. This is similar language we used on our project in Commissioner Pennington's ward called Oakdale Ridge, and I followed up with that project this week, and if you were to go out there, you'll see that those tree preservation easements, while they're maintained by each lot owner, have been respected, and the neighborhood is actually built out in a pretty great way with a lot of tree preservation. So, I think we're comfortable with where that language has ended up, and we've explained to the neighbors, to our south, that ultimately, it's going to be on the homeowners and potentially the HOA for the maintenance of that and what all that looks like. all that looks like. Right now, the city doesn't have any mechanism for enforcement or penalties if tree buffers or trees are taken down. So we've kind of walked through all of that with the neighbors, and I think we've had some pretty positive discussions. I know they're here today. I don't know if they want to add anything, but so I guess just for the record, I'll read in the current proposed language. Tree preservation easements shown on the final plat shall be maintained by each individual lot owner. The purpose and intent of the easement is to protect the natural habitat and the existing tree canopy from further encroachment by leaving the area in its natural condition. Undergrowth may be maintained so long as the existing canopy is preserved. Removal of trees should only occur when a tree is damaged or creating a hazardous condition. So the only hesitation on that being the exact final language is it may tweak after Jared looks at it.
You know, I think if you want to add to the end of that, subject to approval by, you know, City of Oklahoma City, I think that's fine. I understand that you would have a little reluctance to commit point-blank without having Jared Martin's input, but since you have experience with it, I, yeah, I like that.
I do not have anybody sign up to speak on this item. I will ask before we comment if there's anybody like to be heard on C 7401. Yes, ma'am? Come on down. You're the next contestant. You're not going to win a thing, but.
I didn't know who to give it to.
Oh, fair enough. Well, give us your name and address for the record and tell us what we need to know.
I'm Judy Jenkins. I live at 2705 Lysander Place in Westbrook. And I would like to thank Mark and his associates. He was very gracious to meet with us, and he was very productive, and I am very satisfied with the changes he's made. Living in Westbrook for 17 years, I am the HOA president. We are concerned that the traffic problem, we have 400 houses approximately in our addition, and we're adding 507 that will have access to that road. That's the main access road. There's currently no stop signs for eight blocks. It empties into Southwest 29th Street, which is rated very poor by the city. It has been that way. It's not slated for resurfacing till winter 2026, so that's going to be added traffic there. The entrance currently by our addition is in very, very bad condition. It's patched all the time, but that's just a concern that we have, and I know they're going to address with us the traffic flow. But the street's condition is also a concern I have. The other concern is sort of a cumulative effect of the Planning Commission. This addition's going to add 507 houses. There's another rent-to-own plat, I think, that was approved on the other side of Southwest 15th for over 200 homes. There are 80 townhouses planned at the corner of Morgan Road and Southwest 29th. So that's a total of more than 820 homes in the next few years. Drainage has been an extreme problem there. We have flooding on Southwest 15th Street, on many streets out there, there's lots of flooding issues. In our addition, where our retention ponds are, we've had beaver problems cutting down the trees and then the whole flow of the water. On this plat, where Lysander is going to meet, they're not going to have that as an entrance, but currently our retention pond at the end of Lysander Place is going to drain into that corner. And I know Mark addressed that. I think you've changed that back border of that house that's numbered 19 on there. And then Mustang Creek comes through there. I'm concerned, number one, they are removing a huge amount of land that is currently used as drainage. And I know they have two commons areas, but that's a lot of land being replaced with a lot of concrete and houses. And we want to be sure that the flow there at the end of Lysander is not obstructed in any way. And they've assured us of that, and I think they will, but I don't know if there's any way to make certain that that will happen.
The city will review its final determination on drainage and detention requirements after, when they get to the final plat stage. So the city's going to take another look at this based on what they're proposing to ensure that's true.
Okay. And you said, oh, did he leave this? Oh, stub street. Can you, could you explain that more? Because you said that's going to be at the end of Lysander.
Yes, I will clarify. The substrate that we're proposing is actually going to go directly to the west, not tie into Lysander that's on the south side. There are issues there with drainage and where they position that street initially. It is not a normal lot depth, and that is where they have their drainage coming through. So it is difficult, from an engineering standpoint, to actually make the tie into that street. What Judy had mentioned was a mistake on our end. There's going to be a lot line on the back of Lot 19 that will create a little drainage area, and there will be access to that drainage area between two lots.
I see.
So, yes, and all of that will get worked out during the final plat stage.
Does that help you?
That was our concern, that the access to that drainage is definitely maintained. And that the creek area up there, there's homes very, very close to that, and that, I know, has been, the city has cleaned that creek area out recently because it has overflowed a lot. You know, the recent years when we had heavy, heavy flooding, 15th Street was barely passable. So hopefully those are issues that are all going to be addressed with this.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. We appreciate you coming down very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to be heard on C 7401? Okay. Well, I will just echo what Mr. Zizao said, that Ronnie and Jennifer Morris write themselves one heck of a letter as it relates to understanding, planning, and zoning. It was exceptional. I read it and was so blown away by how impressed I was, candidly. So at any rate, if there's no further discussion from commissioners on this, this is Ward 3. We're intimately familiar, all of us, with this particular area of Ward 3. There's been a number of.
This is the one with the park that's going to go in on the north side, right?
Yep. Yeah, and then there's that industrial piece to the east, and then the neighborhood there to the north, which was referenced by Ms. Jenkins. So if there's no discussion by commissioners on this, though, I'll take a motion at this time if someone would like to make it.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of C 7401 with the following amendments to technical evaluations, that we add technical evaluation number six, requiring a street stub to the west, and that we add technical evaluation seven regarding tree preservation that was read into the record.
Subject to approval by City Planning.
Subject to approval by City Planning staff.
Yep. Tree preservation easement language is read into the record by Mr. Zizao, subject to the approval by the City of Oklahoma City.
Heard.
Good with that? Okay. So I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat, subject to the amended technical evaluations. That's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is approved. Thank you, Mr. Zizao, and thank you, Ms. Jenkins and others who attended on this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, I would also point out to Ronnie and Jennifer, if they are here or listening, that we do have a vacancy in Ward 3 for Commissioner. So if interested, reach out to your councilperson.
That's right. Mr. Morris or Ms. Morris?
Who?
Okay. Next item on our agenda, item 16 was deferred to April the 14th, so we're at item 17.
This is SPOD 1362, application to rezone 6401 North Kelly Avenue from SPOD 1151.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Gunner Joyce with Reeger Law Group, 136 Thompson Drive, and representing the applicant, RMK Investments. If you guys remember, we were here in December on this one, and no change to the actual application itself, we discovered as we got closer to council, there was a discrepancy in the ownership map and the list that went out. So we corrected those addresses and re-noticed. We're not aware of any protests. Haven't received anything from our office. In reviewing the agenda packet today, I did notice the actual master statement was our original filing and not the updated one from last time we were here in December. So reached out to staff, I believe, early to mid-morning. You received an updated copy, but just to reiterate, we agree to the removal of the five uses that we agreed to last time here at Planning Commission, and as well as the doubling of the dumpster setback from 25 to 50 feet.
Could you just articulate for us as a refresher on which five uses were removed?
Absolutely. It is 8,356 participant recreation and entertainment.
Yep.
8,334 basically drive-in eating establishments, 8,336 fast-food eating establishments, 8,346 small gasoline sales, and 8,349 bed and breakfast lodging accommodations.
Okay. Thank you. That is helpful. Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward, sir. Do you have questions of the applicant?
Just quickly, again, just to reiterate. So City Council had no comments substantively. This was just, this is all just about the notice.
We didn't make it to City Council yet. This was caught before. We were in front of them, so we came back to Planning Commission. But we've reached out, kind of elongized that question with Councilmember Nice, and we have met with her, and will again reach back out before we're in front of her at City Council.
Excellent. So no, no questions. Okay. I do have somebody sign up to speak. Mr. Warrior, you want to be heard on this You're really throwing me off when you sit on the opposite side of where you normally sit.
I guess, got to kind of keep things going for you.
Yeah, keep me on my toes.
Yes, Zenith Warrior, 5712 North Lottie Avenue. Concerned with the particular location, I didn't quite hear from the applicant what the proposed use of that location that was listed there. If you recall, I think it was about a year ago, that land was up for rezoning by the particular owner that purchased the property. It was my understanding that the owner had a business cannabis testing facility over there on South Santa Fe, North Santa Fe, between 50th and 36th Street, and that the facility was going to be used for various types of medical supply testing, testing of cannabis and various types of other types of products that was part of it. It was going to be a type of retail sales at all that particular time. It's come to my understanding that the corner that's directly east, on the southeast corner, that section of property there that includes a service station and also a cannabis dispensary is going to be rezoned and going to be possibly a 7-Eleven convenience store in that particular corner. So I was, and I think the cannabis dispensary was opened up at that current location where it is now because they wasn't able to get approval for their previous location on northeast 63rd Street, which was just east of the military facility. So I just have questions about whether or not this particular applicant of using this particular, I believe, just one track. It's about, it'd be two tracks. And that building, since it had been rezoned over a year ago, has not been occupied, hasn't had any type of use. And since the cannabis dispensary is looking for a new location because it's being, because of a 7-Eleven taken over that corner, are they planning on using that particular building as a cannabis dispensary? And if so, I had some concerns and questions about their use of that particular property.
In the applicant's, in their application, Mr. Warrior, it says specifically that no bar, tavern, or marijuana dispensary shall be permitted. So it's explicitly prohibited by their, by their language.
I see. Did it not say what it was used, was going to be used for, or?
My understanding, I don't know that they said it specifically, but my understanding is that the automotive component of that use was still the intended purpose along the corner. You were trying to make use of the track to the west with these other uses. And then we got concerned and had conversations about the homes that abut it to the north, about making sure that we weren't going to have, because there's not enough space there for a drive-through or an order window, much less a gasoline station or something like that. So we just wanted to strike those uses. But the automotive use is only permitted, which is automotive equipment and storage, and automotive equipment sales and rentals, such as moving trucks, tractor-trailers, and storage trucks, is only allowable on Track 2, which is not demonstrated on the visual you get on your screen there, but Track 2 is the hard corner, and Track 1 is the one-off.
Okay. So it's just going to be used for some type of automobile storage?
That was my understanding from the applicant. I mean, again, there's a litany of proposed uses, but none of those give me any heartburn at this point. I don't want to speak for you, Commissioner Pennington, but.
No, they don't, because as you might remember, when we had that discussion, it was pretty extensive, all the things we took out.
Yep.
To approve. But, and you know, Mr. Warrior, I'm happy to visit with you about it, and we can visit with Councilwoman Nice before it gets to City Council, too, if you have any concerns between now and then. You know that she is very careful about this issue in this area in particular. And you'll recall about the, excuse me, the cannabis place that was just east of the military facility.
Yes.
That she took a lot of interest in making sure that that got, that got corrected. So I'm sure she will be very sensitive to the issues of the neighbors behind this, this property.
Now, is it, is it correct that 7-Eleven is proposing to build a convenience store at that location there on the southeast corner of that intersection?
That I don't know. Yeah, I'm not sure. Maybe, maybe city staff knows, but I'm not aware.
Okay. That's, well, that's just kind of what I've heard, what's on the street. So I just heard that. So I don't know if it's come to you in particular, but it would have to come to this body for that rezoning, for that.
It's to the southeast.
Or is it already zoned? It's currently now a convenience store now?
Yeah. It's probably, yeah.
So it's already zoned for that then?
And that one lot's not big enough for a 7-Eleven?
No, it'd take everything you see on the screen there.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just talking about that whole gas pump, the retail, all that whole section of that corner there. I think they were planning on doing that, have that. Okay, yeah, I just was just jump-checking to make sure there wasn't an other alternative motive or use of that particular corner other than what had been stated. Okay, thank you.
Of course.
And I'm happy to visit with you, Mr. Warrior, about it.
Thanks for coming down. Okay. If there's no further discussion from commissioners, I think we can take a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of SPOD 1362 to City Council.
And that would be subject to the application as amended by the applicant, deleting use units 8,300.56, 8,300.34, 8,300.36, 8,300.46, and 8,300.49? Okay.
One more comment on that that I missed, but you reminded me when you brought up the automobile use. We actually limited, at your request last time, 8,319. The "such-as" language.
Yeah.
Was limited to moving trucks, tractor-trailers, and storage trucks.
Right.
Such-as been eliminated.
Got it. So I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council, subject to the TE 1, which I just articulated into the record, deleting those uses. It's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval. Good luck with your project. Thank you, Mr. Warrior. Great to see you, as always. Next item on the agenda today is item 19.
This is item 1393, application to rezone 10501 East Memorial Road from AA Agricultural District, SPOD 1393.
And item 18, just for the purposes of clarifying the record, was continued until March the 24th. So is the applicant for SPOD 1393 present? Go ahead, please.
Yeah. We're just wanting to split this up into five building lots. Ex-minister is a used street that the city runs trash on, and so it's already has utility easement that we'd, that we would use on it. And then for the water and sewer, we just put in wells and septics for this.
Got it. And what was your name and address for the?
I apologize. Kyle Isbell, 6312 North East 71st.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Commissioner Pennington, it's back to you, sir. It's your ward.
Thank you. And I did visit with Kyle earlier today and asked about whether he had spoken with neighbors, and so there's a couple that you've been in touch with and haven't heard any concerns so far. I think, and I visited briefly with staff about this as well, I think there are some similar developments of similar size that are not too far away, that we've fairly recently approved. And so, you know, without neighbor objections, and given that there is, that there is similar development that's occurred nearby, I'm in support. So.
Okay. One question I had on this application, assuming that that, we didn't kind of move towards staff's recommendation of denial, was clarification on the architectural regulations for AA. Would that allow for metal facade on homes? I think it would.
Yes.
Okay. Is that something that concerns you? I'm not as familiar with the area, so I don't.
I'm not a fan of it, but I don't, I'm going to defer to Commissioner Highsmith.
I would make the comment, as I always do, that I think it's how you do it, not what you do it with. As an architect, I believe all materiality has value and potential. And matter of fact, we've recommended on several projects, pre-engineered metal panel for a home, and think you can do it well. So, you know, it always depends on execution, and, you know, I can't, there's no guarantees there ever, but I don't have a problem with materiality. There's no guarantees there ever, but I don't have a problem with the materiality myself.
Okay. Anybody else have comments or thoughts on this differently from what Commissioner Pennington articulated?
What size of the lots?
One acre, I believe.
One acre.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm going to defer to your judgment on this. I'm not in favor and would be more inclined to support staff's position. I think we are reaching a place where we need to be a little bit more circumspect, I guess, about, you know, the regulations we have in place and the sort of Wild West development atmosphere that's going on right now. I... But again, I'm going to defer to your judgment on this.
One other thing I do want to make sure we at least talk about is notable in our staff report is that fire did object, saying if creating lots less than five acres without city water supply, water tanks for firefighting or sprinklers are needed. I mean, I know we've kind of had that sprinkler discussion. I just want to make sure that we see that comment. We didn't miss it. It's there, so...
I saw it and thought it could be, you know, a reasonable request on a development like this. And no, not, you know...
I... I don't know if that's something that... Had you considered that? What was that? And of course, let me read it.
Request from the Fire Marshal for sprinkling and/or, you know, a water tank.
My only initial thought is, and before he answers, is if he was represented by an attorney, we know how this would go. This would be the classic battle of how many people we have approved this for because the city council hasn't made a decision firmly, you know, about how to handle it.
Yeah. Like, if any of them made sense, it would be this one. But, you know, even still, I don't want to...
And how many more five-acre lots there are to subdivide into one-acre lots going down the road, saying, "Well, you did it there."
I defer to your... I mean, honestly, in this instance, I defer to your judgment of the area. Sounds like you've connected with neighbors and talked to staff, and you feel comfortable. It's a recommendation anyway. It's got to go to city council, so there's another discussion there. I haven't been involved in it, so I certainly, you know, feel comfortable giving you some deference in terms of if you want to go against what's recommended in the staff report.
Well, I feel comfortable, but I'm not ignoring Commissioner Powers' point about, you know, development in some of the places that are further outside of the urban core of Oklahoma City. But I still believe that this commission and the city council need to have some more discussions together about how these things are going to be handled. Because, you know, even if we were to take a hard stance now, they seem to consistently overturn us whenever we make those recommendations. So I think we need to get on the same page. But I feel comfortable with this request as is.
Okay.
I would love to just quickly add, since this is our last item, I don't mean to be...
We still have item number eight we have to go back to, but that's...
Oh, yeah? Okay. Well, I don't want to be too verbose here, but, you know, I agree that I think, right, just like our plan OKC states, it's to our benefit to actually pump the brakes on the densification of our exterior wards and focus the densification into the interior. Unfortunately, doing the same thing in the interior is much, much harder. Any kind of infill development in the core takes leaps and bounds more effort to do successfully, especially with all the added, you know, layers of design approval. So until that time, I think it... I do think it's hard for us to fully do pump the brakes on these developments. Because as we've said several times, we have a housing crisis.
Curtis, come on.
We have a housing crisis, and we need to address those needs. And so we've got to change our incentives. That's my opinion, just as the Ward 6 commissioner, and I just thought I'd take the opportunity to quickly state.
Okay. I agree. Well, let's see, just out of an abundance of caution, is there anybody that wants to be heard on S.P.U.D. 1393? Okay. Seeing none, if you would like to make a motion, Commissioner Pennington, I think at this point, we can make it and see where we are.
Perfect. I move to recommend approval of S.P.U.D. 1393 to city council.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on S.P.U.D. 1393, and there are... Well, there's no technical evaluation. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended for approval. That's the last item. We did skip item number eight, so we'll go back to that. Is the applicant present on that item? Welcome back, Ms. Brooks.
That's pretty straightforward. They're essentially just combining some existing spuds. I don't believe there's any new uses attached to it. Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Pennington, this is your day to be on fire. You got any questions on this one?
No questions on it. No. I'm good with it.
Okay. Anybody want to be heard on S.P.U.D. 1392? Maybe the person that called Curtis was calling about that. I don't know. There's nobody here, Curtis, so I'm going to pick on you. Sorry. Okay. If there's no further discussion from commissioners, I think we'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of S.P.U.D. 1392 to city council.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on S.P.U.D. 1392. There are no technical evaluations. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your vote. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended approval. Good luck with your project. That's the last item on our agenda today. The remainder of our items have been continued or withdrawn, so with that, we move to additional items. Planning Commission committees. Commissioner Hinkle, any report from... What is it? It's a DRC now.
Yes and no. After last two weeks ago's meeting, and we talked a lot about notice signs, I went and checked, and for about $125, you can have a standard four-by-eight coroplast sign with your verbiage on there. You write in the details, and then it goes to... I mean, take that information for what you want, but there's two or three vendors in town that will... Taylor Media? Print... No, not us. They'll print off a four-by-eight sheet of coroplast with all the verbiage on there that is required, except for the address, the time of the meeting, and whatnot. And then the developer, whoever's responsible for noticing that... I know we've got lots of conversation to have about that, but they would basically just go pick this up at the place, and that's how Moore does it as well. Moore has a sign vendor that keeps 20 of these on hand, and when you want one, you just go buy one or two or three. And I know Edmund, you have to have one on every... Facing the road, if it's on a corner, you've got to have two. If it's, you know, you've got to have three. But I just did some investigation on the hard cost of the actually buying the sign. That doesn't get installed. That doesn't do any of the regulations, so...
Got it.
Updating, yeah.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Clare? Nothing for me. Commissioner Powers? Commissioner Privet? Commissioner Hinkle? Commissioner Highsmith?
I'll just say again what a pleasure it was to serve a Commissioner coffee. She was wonderful. And I would just ask my fellow commissioners in her absence, until we get a replacement, take an extra special look at cases in Ward 3, and let's help each other make sure that if residents are here, that they feel like we were as thoughtful about those cases as we would be about, you know, cases in our own wards.
Yep.
So, but I know you guys will do that, but I want them to feel represented in somebody's absence, so...
Planning Department?
Nothing.
Okay. JJ says no. Sarah's got something. Sarah Welch to the podium. Sarah Welch to the podium.
Yeah, Sarah has something.
Sarah, we need your comments. You're on the record. We're recording still. Lights are on.
Well, I might cry if I say this, so I just want to let you all know of the passing of our friend and colleague, Susan Atkinson. She passed away earlier this week. You may remember her because she would stand up here and bravely present comp plan amendments. And I don't think she'll mind me telling you that she hated it, like she hated it. But she did it. She was very brave. But her power and her connection with people, so I just want to tell you that because you interacted with her, and she also brought packets to you, dropped off packets at your house. So I just want to let you know that, though.
No, I appreciate you sharing that with us. I'm sorry to hear that, and I'm sorry for your department. Municipal counselor? Nothing? Okay. Citizens to be heard? Barry, you got anything? Okay.